Budget meeting. Um, can we please to the best that we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
And justice.
Justice for all.
So we would like to welcome everybody tonight. I'm Lisa Lovett, Board President. Shaylee Swift is with us. She's our Vice President. Nadine Hanlon, Board of Education Trustee. Jason Requa, Board of Education Trustee. Charles Pitt, Board of Education Trustee. Julie Christensen, Superintendent of Schools. Heather Isomann, she's our Elementary Principal. Kevin Watson, Middle School Principal. Carol DiAgostino, High School Principal. Nick Picardo, Executive Director of Student Services. And Deb Ryan's with us tonight as District Treasurer. Copies of the proposed 2020-2021 Kendall Central School District budget are available online through our website. And we will start the presentation. Please send all your questions through the chat room. Please hold all of your questions until the end of the presentation. Some of your questions will be answered as we move along through the slides. After being recognized as when your question is asked, you need to please state your name and your address before you begin. If you ask a question, please allow the Board Administration time to answer before another question comes in. If you have several questions, please ask one or two and then allow others an opportunity before before you. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Board candidates, our attendants, and will be asked if they would like to address the audience. Reminders, the budget vote, transportation replacement reserve fund usage, and Board of Education members' election will be held Tuesday, June 9th by absentee ballots only. And we can begin with the PowerPoint presentation.
Sherri, is there anybody that you need to know names? And typically we'd have you sign in, but since we're doing this via Zoom, do you need somebody, Sherri, or a name for the record?
There's several that are just first names. If they could say their last name, Barb. You're going to have to unmute them.
I have to unmute them. I'm muting her now. Come on. It's probably Seabird.
I'm guessing.
For some reason, she won't unmute, so maybe she doesn't have that.
Okay, farther down, I have.
It says it's from Barb Seibert.
Yep, Seibert. Thank you, Barb, for entering in chat. That might be easier if you entered in chat.
Okay, and the person with the initials D. Justin Brundage.
Oh, is it Dan Brundage? Where is it?
It's also, yes. No.
You have to get closer to the speakers here because we can't hear you.
All right, time to get her set up.
Is DB Dan Brundage? I unmuted you if that's the case. Yeah, he muted himself. There you go.
See if he can.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, the person Alyssa? I only see a first name.
You can please put your last name in the chat. That would be awesome. It's the chat's the little box in the bottom. Looks like a little bubble.
Okay, and.
Alyssa and DB you need, right?
Right. Leila, okay, I just saw Leila Kaiser. Thank you. Steph's iPhone. I'm assuming that Steph Salamon, if she could verify that.
No, Stephanie Barrett.
Stephanie Barrett, okay.
We still need DB. We still need Alyssa to put a name in.
I gotta find him. Okay, and Mary's iPad. I'm not sure who that is. Mary, if you could let us know your last name when you have a moment. She's waving at us.
You just enter that in the chat room.
It's Mary.
Mary Mann, yep.
Hi, Nadine.
Hi, Mary.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay.
For DB, it's Dave Barrett.
Dave Barrett, okay. Thank you.
Is that everybody?
Everyone, Sherri?
Yep, so far, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for being patient with us. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, would you like me to share the screen, Lisa?
Okay, so Kendall Central School 2020-2021 school budgets. We have Kendall Pride. We have Remote Learning for All, Mental Health Continuum, STEM and AG Opportunities, Before and After Care Program, One-to-One Devices, Grades, Kindergarten to 12, Many Electives from Fishing and Wildlife, Cooking, Robotics, Extracurricular Activities is our First Lego League, Trap Shooting, Model UN, FFA, For Age, just to name a few, PTSA, Booster Collaborations, Musicals, Charity Contributions, Athletics, Music, and Art Recognitions. Kendall High School's 2019 graduation rate was 97%. 94% of the students graduated with at least a Regents diploma, which is awesome. Continuity of Learning, Distance Learning Continued Through Virtual and Remote Mythology, Zoom Office Hours, Digital Planners, Paper Copies, etc. The teachers and the staff have been very hard at work these last 12 weeks, and we can't thank everybody enough. Food provided to children 18 years or younger, breakfast and lunch for five days a week. Approximate meals made per week is $3,800. Buildings are being maintained, operations continued, and mental health support are being provided.
School is not closed. Just looks different.
So our budget process is to fulfill the mission of the Kendall School District, which is to provide the knowledge, skills, values, and attitudes needed by students to live responsibly and to compete in today's and tomorrow's world. Long-term financial planning, which is a struggle right now with just unsure where the governor's headed with us, to maintain current programs and to consider the impacts of COVID-19, our enrollment reopening, and shared services. And I will hand it over to you, Julie, to start the budget breakdown.
Certainly will. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
First slide will be our expenditures. So as you can see, the largest part of our budget is salary, wages, and benefits. We are a people person business. Debt service, which is a little over $2 million. You will see in the slide later on that our state aid is $2.1 million, so it's more than covering our debt service. Audits, out-of-district special education programs, 1.5. Our BOSI services, a lot of that is technology and some of the other supports they provide us, 1.5 million. Transportation, sorry, I'm admitting somebody here. Transportation costs, and we have some transportation contracts, which are about $35,000. It's about $880,000. Buildings and grounds, $835,000. Contract services, those would be services for our fire, our train service, HVAC, lots of different services we have to provide. A postage, which went up a little bit this year with absentee ballot process, tax collection, and a number of other responsibilities. Utilities, about $184,000. Sports, about $240,000. Supplies and equipment, about $280,000. Inter-fund transfer, that is $145,000. Some of that is due to different costs and cafeteria. And then summer programs, about $65,000. My screen's not working. Come on, go down. Uh-oh, don't freeze. Okay, revenues. Where tax dollars come from. Our primary revenue stream is state aid. As Lisa mentioned, it's a little uncertain at this time. It's about $11.6 thousand in state aid. That includes building aid, which, as I mentioned, is 2.1 million of that $11,000. Taxes, just under $5 million. Other local revenue, $389,000. That may be BOSI's refund, tuition, service for some of our students. Reserves, we're anticipating using reserves to fund what we're anticipating will be reductions in state aid, Medicaid, and then pilots, scot-free, about $55,000. Uh-oh, my slide's getting stuck here. Okay, here's some data points. This is a dense slide. I'll try to talk slowly to review some of the aspects of the data points. State aid, we're anticipating our state aid. This is our best guess. We're waiting for the governor to make his determination on the first reduction. We have reduced it about $830,000. And that's anticipating reductions. Our foundation aid, which is our basic operating aid, is flat, and then further reduction, about 6% there. And then part of the state aid, as I mentioned, is building aid, another piece of what we call expense-based aids. Transportation, high-cost aid, textbook, those are dependent upon usage as well as enrollment. And with some of our use lower than it has been because of the closure, we anticipate those costs will also go down. Our budget to budget, last year to this year, we are budgeting a decrease of about $170,000. Building aid, as you see, is just under $2.2 million for what we receive from the state and our project. So our mortgage, if you will, is just over $2 million. So about $165,000 we're in the plus, if you will. As Lisa mentioned, long-term planning, part of that is being very strategic when we go out and seek money, when we go out for bonding, if you will. And we've anticipated that we would have a surplus in building aid, and that helps us offset some of the general fund costs as well. Just another data point, during the 2009 recession, Kendall Schools lost about $5.5 million, and that ran from 2009 to about 2015. So in those six years, we lost about $5.5 million. After listening to the governor and others, that was a blip in comparison to what they're looking at with the extended closure we're here now. So we anticipate that recession, and that rebound will take a lot longer, and the reduction could be more significant. Right now, we're anticipating using $500,000 in reserves to offset that gap in our revenue stream, being state aid. We also know, as we finish out this year, some of our costs, such as substitutes, fuel, some of those costs that we otherwise would have incurred from March to June, won't be as large as they otherwise might have been. And so if we have surplus funds in that area, we'll also use that in the event that our guess on state aid is not as high as it should be. Three-part budget. As you can see, our educational program is about 70% of the budget. Capital components, about 19%. Administration is 10 to 11%. You look at the contingency budget, how there's not significant changes. A lot of that's equipment, and there's a slide later on that'll speak to that. Educational program budget, obviously, this is part, this is about 70% of our budget, and that's everything we do for our children, all students, pre-K to grade 12. Our vocational program, that's through BOSI's. We do have some programs here on-site. Our co-curricular clubs and our athletics, student transportation, staff development, that includes all staff, cafeteria, bus drivers, as well as instructional and administrative staff, school media, library work, technology enhancements. So our one-to-one devices is covered under the educational part of the budget, as well as summer programs. The capital part of the budget, which, as I mentioned, is about 19%, that's our expenses for operations and maintenance of the school buildings, our school bus purchases, which, as I talked about, transportation aid, we get about 85 cents in the dollar. So a great deal of what we're spending in school buses is covered in aid. Our debt service and property tax refund, and the debt I already mentioned in regards to building aid. The administrative component covers pretty much everything else. So board of ed expenses, they have some professional development requirements as well. Our administration and business office expenses, our school resource officer, that's contractual service, our medical service contracts, we have a few students, an additional next year that require one-to-one nursing services, legal services, our auditor, text collector, financial advisor, and, as I mentioned, mailing, postage has significantly increased with the absentee ballot process. What do we see as some of the changes? As I mentioned, we're anticipating state aid reductions in regards to the extended closure. There's also some costs associated with reopening plans, and I'll talk a little bit about that later on in the PowerPoint. Currently, we've already spent just under $20,000 in hand sanitizers and PPE in preparation for those who are here. Building aid, I talked about that already, that's offsetting the capital project debt. Savings for Energy Performers Contract, we've been actualizing that the last few years and will continue to do so. Increase in contractual services, the facilities, as I mentioned, some of the train and other services we have, as well as medical, which is a pretty big increase this year. Cost of living, minimum wage, pension costs. The pension cost is what they call a five-year look back. So we anticipate those costs will increase over the next few years. Obviously, the stock market's not doing well due to the extended closure, so we know that that will increase health insurance costs. Not sure where that will land, but certainly those costs will increase. And then special education and academic needs, especially with the extended closure, is making sure we assist those students who've struggled with the remote learning. Some of the mandated costs, as I mentioned, professional development, that training is for everybody across the board, there's requirements for that. I talked a little bit about some of the reopen requirements. We're still evaluating what that might look like and what some of those costs might be. The absentee voting process, which was a new process for us. I do apologize, I know we've gone through this absentee process. It was kind of dropped in our laps at short notice, and we use a lot of different places to gather some of that information, some of that being tax rolls. So I apologize for those who may have received an absentee ballot and your significant other had passed. Their name is still on the deed that does show up. We also use our Chronicle listing and our census for those who are students here. But that has been a pretty significant cost and process for us. And thank you to Sherri, because it's all she's done the last two weeks. Special education costs, those are mandated. We have about 200 additional special ed requirements over the federal government, so that's pretty significant. You saw that that was about $1.5 million in earlier slide. Academic intervention, paid leave, so a lot of that with different screening processes and the like. They keep adding more paid leave requirements, we're required to pay and then hire a sub. Pension system contributions, as I mentioned, many various reporting requirements, those are increasing daily with some of the processes we need to now complete with the reopen and with the Department of Health and the State Education Department, and now the Governor's Office. State mandated auditing functions and compliance with minimum wage regulation. I don't want to keep this slide too long. What have we done to address some of those costs? We've done some rightsizing based on enrollment. We have some class sizes, particularly at the elementary schools and grade levels, that are about 40 to 45 students, so we're looking at addressing that. Shifting duties from BOSI's, so we've reduced our BOSI's costs. There's lots of things that we need to do. I won't bore you with all the details, but a lot of data reporting that we have some services from BOSI's. And those duties are shifting to administrators. Administrators have been awesome, picking up a lot of additional duties so that bullet number one is not as impacted as minimally as possible. Health and Workers' Comp Consortium, we're looking at staff efficiencies and all year all over the place, how we utilize teacher aides, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, to address some of those declining revenue concerns. Cooperative bidding, shared services, we have some shared services now with the Transportation Department and Holly. We're increasing some of those to the extent possible. Professional development and some extracurricular, we have some clubs, for example, wrestling that we share with Holly. As I mentioned, we're using some reserves. We're also looking at long-range planning. So in regards to reserves, we have reserves that are dedicated to certain tasks. Capital reserve, bus reserve, those are very specific functionality. You really can't move those funds around, they need voter approval. We have other reserves, workers' comp, unemployment, for example, that you're making your best guess of what those reserves you might need in there to cover. Some of those reserves, about 1.8 million that we have, some flexibility that we will use to fill that gap for ours to the 500,000. As I mentioned, that was a five-year process in the past in regards to the 2009 recession. We're looking at a 10-year, we need to be very strategic in how we use our reserves. We don't want to be where the city of Rochester is at this point, expend all the reserves in one year and then have to lay off mid-year. So that's a lot of that long-range planning. As I talked about the building aid, currently the capital project that's coming online, we've been very strategic in how we've built that plan. And so we need to get to about 2024, and then we'll start to see some of that aid from building aid be quite a bit larger than 165, and that will help get us hopefully to the end of the recession and until the economy turns around. And then, as I talked about, energy enhancements. Try to slow down, I know I tend to talk quickly, I apologize. Our budget, 17,603,596. It's a 1.99% increase. The Board had made a deliberate decision to keep the levy as small as possible, but also to generate some revenue for us, knowing that there was a reduction in state aid. We also recognize that our families are struggling, and there's so many families in Orleans County that are out of a job, so we want to be thoughtful in regards to that as well. Our tax rate is $16.48 per 1,000. In comparison, if you look at some of the other districts to our east, they're looking at $22, $23, $24 dollars per 1,000. So we've been, again, very thoughtful in how we look at our budget. Property owners will see about a 1.78% increase, and that's due to assessment and equalization Does the tax, so they determine how much your taxes will rise? Now, as I just mentioned, that's due to property taxes, we're looking at what we can use through property taxes as based upon equalization, assessed property values. Reductions if we have a contingency budget. Student supplies, we do purchase quite a bit of supplies for our students. Certain equipment and the technology devices, as Lisa mentioned in the continuity of learning plan, we're one-to-one K through 12. I can tell you that we're one of the rarities. Most districts have maybe 5 through 12 if they're lucky, but we have all of our students with a technology device. We also know that they're not going to return the same ways which we sent them out to their homes, but that would be one of the items that we can't cover in the contingency budget, as well as the other equipment, if it's a dump truck that breaks down or whatever. Non-union employee salary increases, so that's my secretary, Deb Ryan, some of our nurses, just a handful of folks in that category, some parts of the sports program, community use of our school facilities, we don't charge for folks who use our school facilities, and then any other additional reductions. I know the question has been, so I'll just answer it now. Folks are asking, what happens if it is a 20% reduction in state aid? Because that's what the governor's saying. We're hoping it won't be. We've been looking at what we call progressive reduction in state aid. So if that's the case, we shouldn't see 20%. But we have not made decisions on what other reductions will be. Obviously, I'm optimistic that it won't be 20% for Kendall, and, as I mentioned, we'll use some of our reserves to offset to the extent possible. Some of our propositions regarding bus purchases, as I mentioned, that's one of the reserves we put money in, the voters approve the money going in, we also need to prove that us spending those dollars, and that is funded pretty significantly through the expense-based aids through state aid. Voter eligibility, 18 years of age, United States citizen, legal resident 30 days prior to June 9th. We have a five-member board. Nadine is not seeking reelection, and Jay Requa has resigned his position. His job takes him out quite a bit. So as I said, one year, one open seat for five years, one open seat for three-year terms. We have Rachel Fiskin and Brian Hardenbrook are seeking election. The individual who receives the most votes will receive the five-year term, and the individual who receives the second highest number of votes will receive the three-year term. So Rachel, can you unmute yourself, or do you need me to do so?
Hello?
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thanks. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us today. I have lived in Kendall for about 25 years, and I am an alumna of the graduating class of 1998. I grew up in Kendall on Kemble Road, and my maiden name is Lynch. My family and I recently moved back to Kendall in 2018 because we wanted our son, Aiden, to attend Kendall School, and he is currently in third grade. My life of education, I wholeheartedly believe the milestones our children achieve through public education are some of the most significant in their lives. Our education is one of the most profound processes in a child's life and starts in the home, continuing in the school, and the community. I graduated from SUNY Brockport with my bachelor's degree in secondary English education and earned my master's degree in literacy from Kenesha's College. I am in my 12th year of teaching for the Rashan Riada Central School District, and I'm currently an eighth-grade ELA teacher at Berger Junior High. In the previous 11 years, I taught ELA at the high school, and during my tenure there, I taught students with disabilities, students with 504s, English language learners, and honors courses. In the last four years, I was also the literacy specialist for the high school and created implemented the structure and procedures for the literacy center, which is something I'm extremely proud of. This model is for struggling learners who need support in reading, writing, and vocabulary. I was also charged with scheduling and creating a skill-based model for AIF. These experiences have fostered my need for lifelong learning and development as a parent and educator. I will bring knowledge and ideas about how we can increase enrollment, improve programs, and extracurricular opportunities for all students, and support implementation of technology into curriculum and instructions so students are college and career-ready. As an educator, I've undergone professional development best for activities in my classroom. I want to support our community's children, not only in the traditional classroom setting, but also their social and emotional needs as well. I will be a voice for many community members, parents, students, teachers, and staff members because education is my passion and life work. Thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to supporting our Kendall community members and educators.
Thank you, Rachel. Brian, do you mind unmuting yourself?
There, did that work?
Yep, you're good.
Perfect. Hi, so I'm Brian Hardenbrook. Most of you, I think, know me. I grew up in Kendall as well. We grew up on Carr Road. I have two children in school, Brennan and Brenton. They're twins. Bryn is in fourth grade, Brenton is in third grade and in inclusion class as a special needs student. So I think that's one perspective I can bring to the table as a parent of a child with a typical education as well as a child with special education needs. I think that gives me a little bit different perspective than a lot of people, and as well as my service with the Kendall Fire Department. So I've been an officer there, going on 10 years, where I'm currently serving as my second year as chief. And I've been doing the fire prevention at the school for those 10 years. That kind of got pushed on me as soon as I became an officer, and so I just kind of stuck with it. And so I think there's a lot I can bring to the table with safety aspects and different things related to that with the school, and I just look forward to trying to serve the community in a different way. Thanks.
As I mentioned, budget vote is this year, Monday, June 9th, is by absentee ballot only. If you need more ballots, please contact Sherri Madison, smedison@kendalschools.org, or you can call our office, 659-2741. Again, this was a new process for us, it was difficult to determine who was residing in different homes. So if you need more, please let us know. There is no walk-in budget voting allowed by Governor Walmsall's orders. Okay, this is not necessarily in regards to the budget, but I thought it was an opportunity to share some of our reopening process. What we have in place is we worked through what it may look like, our new normal, if you will, in September, as you heard. As you heard last week, summer school will be remote as well, and we're waiting to hear what the summer, or June, excuse me, September might look like. We are required to develop a reopening plan. We have a number of staff and support staff, as well as teaching staff, willing to serve in that capacity. And we need to submit that to the state for approval. Right now, there's a lot of conversation about social distancing. So we are lucky here in Kendall because we have small class sizes. So we've already done some measuring in our classrooms. At the elementary school, the classrooms are all different sizes. We can have fit social distance six feet. In some classrooms, they can fit 12, others can fit 18. It kind of depends on the classrooms. We are able, we've already, Heather and I have already walked the building and know that we are able to have all students come onsite every day, social distance, even with looking at some, two reductions at the elementary school, just based upon our ability to spread people out and utilize staff that we do have that can assist in that practice. In the high schools, it's about, those classrooms are larger. They don't have as much stuff, if you will, as the elementary class have little tables. So pretty consistently, you can put 18 in the classroom, and we have some larger spaces. There's a big room in the English hallway, as well as in the library, that we can also spread students out. We also look at some very creative scheduling, stagger arrival and dismissal, do some staggering in release time. So we're still in process with that. Again, those are just some very preliminary information. As I mentioned, we have a large committee that will help us define that as we move forward. Social emotional support. We have psychologists, counselors, caseworkers. We have Orleans County Mental Health, as Lisa mentioned, in some of our areas of pride. We have a lot of individuals who are here to support our nursing staff, and that will continue as well, as well as related services. And we, again, can social distance, do some small groups and have space for them to meet those needs. Transportation. When we get closer, knowing what September will look like, we'll put a survey out and make some determinations of how many riders. We have to account for every rider, regardless if they take the bus. We also know we have a lot of parents that drop students off, a lot of kids at the secondary level that drive to school. So once we know what the number will be per bus, then we'll do some reshuffling, if you will, of some routes. There may be, there are opportunities or times where folks may have to wear a mask. Students may have to wear a mask for a short part of that bus route. We'll do the best we can. We only have so many buses. We have to be thoughtful on that as well. Cafeteria, our food service staff, I can't thank them enough. This has been a challenge to serve so many meals during these last few weeks. We've also talked about distancing in the cafeteria. I've counted some seats. We also were looking at some alternative spaces. We've already made some determinations on menu selections. If we need to do more of a grab and go, if they're eating in a classroom, if you will. We've already talked about what that will look like for cleaning those spaces. We're able to address that for breakfast and lunch. I'm going to admit someone, excuse me, facility and cleaning precautions. We had some of those mandates prior to leaving in March, and we'll continue to address that. We've ordered a lot of supplies. We'll probably have to get more, and we've already talked about what that will look like to make sure the space is clean. In extracurricular, honestly, we're waiting to see what the Department of Health will indicate in regards to extracurricular, athletics, music, some other activities, what that may look like. And then once we know, we'll make some determinations on reopening in regards to those areas. Capital improvement project. So we're shifting gears here, just to give a little update where we're at. We had a $14.9 million project that was improved in May of 2019, as I mentioned, fully funded by either the Building Aid or Voter Authorized Capital Reserve Fund. The project will not result in a tax increase. And as I mentioned, building aids are greater than the cost of work already approved. And as the governor mentioned today, he'd like to get people out working. They have been working, and they've been on against a limited crew because of social distancing, but they're here, and they are around both inside and outside the school, addressing some of the project. We are still on par to have the work complete by the end of August. What's included? Cafeteria redesign in the elementary school that also helps some of the flow, plus we have some outdated equipment in there. That's moving along. The gym auditorium floors and the bleachers in both of the buildings. It's a gym and bleachers, and they have been removed. It's totally gutted in there, and they will all be replaced. Update the locker rooms in both buildings and the bathroom here at the elementary school, which is by the locker rooms near the gymnasium. We have some spaces for community service in the business office. They're kind of cramped together on top of each other. That will give them some privacy. Ventilation, improving some ventilation, particularly upstairs. That's almost done. And then the rest of the window replacement. So here's what it kind of looks like. The gymnasium does not look like that any longer. That room in the middle is the downstairs space that we're turning into offices for the Department of Social Services, our caseworker for Orleans County Mental Health. So they'll have a private office, which will be soundproof. The skylight is in the locker rooms. It's disgusting in there. And then you can see the cafeteria line is evamping that as well. They'll also be, will also have a guard now in front of the splash guard, if you will, kind of like they do at Wegmans in front of the cashier. There's what, you can see kind of what the kitchen looks like. And that's just a sense of that classroom is split up into four smaller offices. In the high school, it's updating music, art, and tech space. Again, those spaces are completely gutted. I was over there today. Unbelievable how much work they've accomplished already. The gym and odd floors, gym floors out, bleachers are out. Locker rooms are starting to do some work in there as well. That restroom is by the music room, which is not handicap accessible. Auditoriums, there's some odd systems, some light and sound that'll be updated. And then in the tech rooms, they are not handicap accessible. So here's a picture. So the beige is everything that, and the blue are things that will be completed. Everything else in that building has been updated over the last few years, which completely new building. So here you get a sense what the old gym looked like. There's the handicap accessibility in the hallway, as well as in the tech room. All that tech equipment's out, some that we're using in different spaces. And then there's the old lockers. We actually reuse the lockers from the boys locker room, which are blue, a much better shape than the green ones. And we reuse them here at the elementary school in the fifth and sixth grade wing. Little idea of what the gym floor will look like in both buildings. There's a screen, instead of having that partition that doesn't open and close, they're using a screen. It doesn't quite look like that. Actually, the blue part is a little bit higher up. And then a sense of the art and tech spaces, they've been redesigned. So instead of having three big rooms, it's three decent-sized room and one small room in the middle, which is a computer lab. So that's self-contained, instead of having computers mixed in with woodworking equipment. Site work. If you've been on the campus, you know that there's a lot of work going on here. Looking at lighting and the traffic flow in the elementary school, the front bus loop, not the one we redid last time. The high school bus loop will look similar to the elementary school bus loop in how the buses park and improves the flow there. Will also serve as overflow parking for large events when the buses are not in that area. Some drainage at the athletic fields, outdoor restroom near the track. That's already have the concrete poured and starting that work. And then some drainage also at the elementary school by the fields. A little sense of the outdoor stand. It's a bathroom. There's two, I believe, two toilet facilities in both the girls' and boys' side, and then a small concession stand and some storage. Also have the ice machine out there, so we don't have to drag it from the high school. And then the other picture is the fields that are being replaced. We did some work last year and are completing some of the other work through the capital project. Transportation. We're repairing some of the leaks in the roof, the water line, which will connect as a dead ends now at the bus garage. And the water gets very stale. That will be completed. And then the fuel system, the picture down there does not reflect what it will look like. I think it's from, actually from a gas station. But we'll have cover on it, some lighting, and they can feel from both sides. You have any questions? You can talk to me. We want to thank everybody for the community support. You get a sense, we sent all those devices home. God bless our bus drivers and all of our staff who organized all that. It's been a mass production for food. We love our little notes from our friends. And then Sophia is doing a virtual sphere down there at the end. So we thank everybody for that work. And that concludes that part of the presentation. If you have questions that either I or Lisa did not answer, if you want to enter them into the chat room, we can answer those questions. Let's get out of here. So is the budget vote anonymous? The budget vote, there is a number of individuals that the board will be approving that are budget inspector ballot readers, because obviously the process is different. You sign in when you come in otherwise. And Sheri and others will, obviously, will know who's voting. Sheri's been doing that for a while for absentee ballots, but we have to check that off. So it's not anonymous. You have to sign it. And if you don't sign the front of all three pages, then your vote is invalidated. I'm not sure if she wants to add anything to that. Yes. In regards to less teachers and less aides, there's two FTE classroom teachers and two less FTE teacher aides are all through attrition. Individuals who either, who've all retired or resigned. As I mentioned, we can still accommodate with being very thoughtful in scheduling and some of those very small class sizes accommodate the social distancing with those reductions. Any other questions?
Julie, can I ask a question?
Sure, Nadine.
So the anonymity on the budget vote. I know I did mine already. I signed the front page, and it's stapled to the second page. So yes, you can check them in by the name, but I would think that you could pull that apart and maybe put them, put them away and not, as long as you know that they're signed, you could break them apart and put them, you know, not see how they voted and kind of make it more anonymous.
Yeah, this is a whole new process for us to have this many absentee ballots. So we're trying to figure out how we're going to do that. And obviously, we're going to have a number of them to do. So I think we have to look through the process. You have to sign that, because we otherwise wouldn't know if you were a voter.
Right, right. But it's a two-page thing, and you're signing only the top. So you could have somebody tear them apart and put like the ones that, the vote separately, and then they are pretty much anonymous because you're pulling apart. You know that it's signed, so you know that's a valid ballot. And you could pull it apart. And once it's signed, just put the other vote aside and then count them later. So to me, you could have more of an anonymous vote that way.
I will run that by legal. That's a good, a good suggestion. Let me write it down.
Because I think it's important that it's more of an anonymous thing. I know it's a strange time right now, but I think we could make it more anonymous by doing that process. That's just my opinion, and I suggest it, so.
I got a few other chats. Let me see if there's anything else we missed.
Yeah. What sports programs do you anticipate may be cut at this point in time? We haven't really discussed any of that, hoping that we don't have to do any cuts to sports programs. If we see that it's going to be a 20% decrease, then we might have to take a look at that. But at this point, the board has not discussed any sports programs being cut.
And some of those may be determined by the Department of Health and not necessarily by the school board. Again, we'll have to wait to see how, where they land on that as well. But you're right, those are all the athletics and extracurricular remaining in the budget. Did I miss any other questions, Lisa?
Yeah. What will, what will it mean for class sizes as far as in the elementary school? They might, the couple of grades, it may go down to two classes instead of three. It might be, you might have 20 or 21 kids. What is average class size?
15. At the elementary school, it's about 15. At the high school, it depends. It depends on what, what kids are taking some classes. We had Spanish, some of the class sizes were in the low 20s, and other class sizes could have five or six. It's really, that one's a little bit more variable based upon student interest.
Do you know a national average for class sizes or any around here? I know there are a lot more around our area.
So, for example, I know my husband's trying to get his class sizes under 30. He's running 2029. As I mentioned earlier, we're lucky. Most districts are really struggling because everyone's not hiring because of the budget reductions, and they're all pushing the class sizes up. Most, the average has been 25, 26, 27 kids. Less for primary, more for the secondary.
Okay. They agreed with you, Nadine, that we voted can be recorded, but our vote should not be assigned to us. Yes. And that hopefully we can work out so that can be anonymous. And we all know that teachers are the people who have the biggest impact on a student's day-to-day school life. With students having more and more needs, both economically and socially, how was the decision made to have less teachers and aides as opposed to less administrators?
Do you want me to answer that one? Do you want to take it?
Go ahead.
So again, it's based upon enrollment, so we can have, the duties for administration don't go away if you have a few more kids in the classroom, a few less kids in the classroom. And as I mentioned, a lot of the duties that we reduced from BOCs have all been assumed by administration. So it's a balancing, balancing act in looking at that. We didn't make any reductions in any of those areas where we didn't feel that we could be thoughtful in regards to scheduling and placement. Did I miss any other questions? Got to go back.
That's all I've seen so far.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions at this point?
I don't have a question. I think it's just information. So when the board looked at doing the budget, I think the tax cap was what, 3.2%?
3.8 something.
Okay, 3.8. So the board really made effort to make sure that we still stuck under the 2%, even though that really wasn't put on us. But it was important for us to be responsible to the taxpayers, to not go to that 3.8%. That's just not what I think our duty was to the taxpayers. So we kept it. Even 1.9% was a little high for some of us, but we did keep it under 2%. So I think that's important, just to note that. Also, on the reserves, based on previous audits, the school district has always been given good kudos to our reserves. And I think it was a big decision for the board to dip into that reserve for that $500,000, just to keep the tax rate, I'm sorry, the tax levy lower. So I think it's important to note that, you know, it really is a board, this board worked very hard with Julie and to make it so we aren't stressing the taxpayer out, because we all know that the tax, our taxpayers are stressed, and it's going to even get worse. And so I think it's just good to note that, you know, we, we listen and we know that we have to be responsible to the taxpayer.
Any, oh, yeah, here's one. How much is in the reserves, and by what percentage does that grow each year?
So as I mentioned, we have some reserves, like capital reserve and bus reserve are very designated duties. I can't tell you what the reserve number is off the top of my head. How much it grows each year is dependent. This year, probably we'll, we'll probably put some monies in there and then take it right back out to use to offset the budget. So some reserves have more, some reserves have less. We put money in last year to fund the windows. Again, we talk about long-range planning. Instead of going out to bond for windows, we put money in and then we move that money to pay versus going out and having to incur costs for the fees and everything else you have to pay when you, kind of like when you're doing a mortgage. So all that thoughtful planning piece.
So the workers' comp reserve is what we're borrowing from, right, Julie?
Workers' comp and unemployment are probably split between the two of them.
Okay. So we've been fortunate because our staff has been very good about no workers' comp claims. So we're very fortunate to our staff because that helps us, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So.
Unemployment, we don't know. That one's a little, that's a little tricky going into next year.
Right.
That's why it's harder to predict.
Right. So we're fortunate that we have those to use to offset our taxes. But we can't do it every year, so we have to be cautious as we move forward.
So first set, do you want to close out the public hearing and move to the board meeting?
Yes, but before we do that, I would like to give a special thank you, since we are doing this with a community, to Nadine for serving for 10 years. Your dedication and your heart to Kendall is awesome, and we will miss you tremendously. I know you're only a phone call away, and the school is blessed to have you, and we will miss you. So thank you for all of your hard work and dedication for these last 10 years.
Thank you, thank you. It has been a privilege to serve my high school, my school. And I hope you'll still have me. I'd like to continue on the audit committee as a, as a community citizen. I'm throwing it out to the board. But it's been very rewarding, and I cannot say enough about the teachers and the staff. You know, I'm pretty proud. You know, I'm pretty proud of my, both my kids graduating from Kendall. They did very, very well and they couldn't have done it without everybody there that was part of their life. So, thank you very much and I'm, I'm, I, I think you guys are all going to be in good hands. You've got some two great candidates coming forward that really have a commitment to our community and I think that's pretty awesome. So, I, I think, thank you.
Thank you for doing this, Lisa. Can I do a thank you to Deb Ryan and Cherry because this has been a very interesting budget cycle as well as the administrators and all the staff who've helped us with this process with the absentee ballot, but just a budget that's so unknown and trying to be thoughtful and how we, and strategic is how we move forward. So, thank you for that and the board. I know these are hard conversations.
Absolutely. So, at this point, I'd like to close adjourned our budget meeting and then move into our regular Board of Education meeting for tonight.
Anybody's welcome to stay. If not, you can just hit the exit at the end. I think it's a little box in the left-hand corner. Or right-hand corner, if I knew my right from my left.
Julie, can you wait until I get back to my desk? I have my paperwork there.
Sure.
Just a few minutes to walk down the hall.
Thank you.
Here she comes. So, I don't want the one might think. Want to come in here? Thank you for being so patient for us as we go through this process. She's there, you can get started. She's situated.
Okay, so, it is 7:25, so we can call our regular Board of Education meeting. And do we need to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance again?
No.
Okay. All right, so we have some additions to our agenda. We need to add number 11, change order for the gym divider in the elementary school.
There's actually a few change orders there. Most of them are pretty small.
Okay.
You can take them as a group.
And that is it for any changes or additions. At this point, we can take any visitors' comments if we have any. If not, we will move on. For tonight, we do not have any administrative reports unless there's something that you feel needs to, that you need to share with us tonight. If you do, please let us know. We will unmute you and let you speak through. If not, we will move on. Oh, yes. Carol. Okay, hang on, Carol.
I'll unmute, got it.
Okay. Go ahead, Carol. Oh, she muted again.
I just wanted to make sure that you received all the, all the things we have planned for the end of the year and that one of the things that were mentioned there was that Cassandra Hopkins has agreed to be our graduation speaker. It's a little late, it's later than usual that we bring a name forward because graduation was unusual this year, but I just wanted to make sure you saw that.
Wonderful, thank you.
In my notes. That's it.
Anything else?
Carol, can I, who is Cassandra Hopkins?
Oh, good, that's a good question. That is actually Renee Cliss' oldest daughter. She runs, she runs a medical facility in Albany, which seemed very appropriate for this year to have someone from the medical field.
Perfect. That's right, I do remember now she got married and that name is now familiar. Yep, perfect. Thank you. Good.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll move on for items of Board of Education discussion. First up is our request for proposals for school attorney results. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look through this. This spreadsheet is wonderful to look through. If everybody had a chance to kind of go through it and look at the differences in what they serve, the cost, who they represent, their achievements, and thoughts on how we want to move forward.
Because if you, if you want to interview these candidates, if there's somebody you don't want to interview, we could probably talk about that. And then if you want to do Zoom interviews, if you let Cherry and I know, we can go ahead and coordinate those.
Okay.
So, if we go with one of the firms, would we have a designated attorney so we would always have the same attorney?
Typically, they give you a primary attorney, but in the firms, they have individuals who may specialize in capital projects or someone that may specialize in labor relations. But usually, you have one primary person that you would talk to. So, do you want to interview all four of the firms or individuals? Do we want to do it all in one day and, and generate, you can send some questions, we can get some of those ready. I don't, you don't necessarily do that now, but just trying to get a sense of where you want to proceed. Because usually, we would appoint the attorney in, at the July reorg meeting.
With not being that many, I think it would be, I think we could probably interview all four. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
I agree.
What do you think, Nadine?
I mean, I know Matt, so.
Right, we obviously know him. We could interview the three.
Right. But I mean, out of fairness, I mean, we could include him in the interview process.
Okay.
Do you want to send, have Cherry coordinate some dates with you and then I, we can schedule some Zoom meetings with them?
Sure.
All right, so Cherry's nodding her head because she's sitting at my desk, so she'll send out a message and try to get some dates on the book soon.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
Anything else about that before we move on? No? Okay, so we'll move on to capital project. Julie, do you have anything that you want to add?
No, I, I touched upon it during the presentation. It's moving along. The work's going to look beautiful when it's all complete. It's, they're doing quite a bit out there.
Okay. At this time, we have no reason for executive session, so we will move on to items requiring Board of Education action. So, we have, first, we have our board meeting minutes from April 20th. I need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's been approved. Next, we have our financial report. I need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, comments? I did like to hear that the state is now going to cover all of our lunch expenditures, which is wonderful.
It is.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, go ahead, Nadine.
One question. So, any COVID-19 expenses, are you keeping that kind of separate?
Yes, we can submit something to FEMA. Actually, Deb and I talked about that today. So, we, like PPE, not, not everything can go through, but anything we can submit, we are. And then we're tracking the rest of it just in case they, you know, they indicate otherwise in the future.
Right, because I know FEMA said that they may possibly reimburse.
Yeah, they said it was about $20,000 we've already spent, so hopefully we'll get some of that reimbursed.
Okay, good. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those have been approved. We have approval of recommendations of District Committee on Special Education. I need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'm understanding what you're saying to Cherry sitting over here.
Questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's been approved. Our personnel business, approval of resignations, retirements, leave of absence, layoffs. Really, we don't have much there tonight, so I need a motion to, oh, the big thing in there is our tenure recommendations. I need a motion to approve.
Well, actually, Lisa, can I, I'm sorry. The tenure, we'll invite the, the recenies, those for tenure at the June meeting. This is just your second review of tenure recommendations.
Right, okay.
It's the one change that, it's Leila who's on our line for science. We sent it to you electronically today. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're good. I need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She's been approved. Okay, next is our code of conduct second review. We need a motion to approve.
There's one change. You noted that, correct?
Yeah, can you, can you explain that, please?
So, we have some, yeah, we have some students who are not part, who are graduating early, so they're not necessarily part of the cohort. So, it's looking, you're talking about the top 10 in the Vail Sale piece. Yes, having the understanding that those students who may not graduate with the cohort wouldn't be recognized for those recognitions if they graduate early.
I don't have the change in front of me, but it said something about ninth grade. Where's my?
Ninth grade. Or that they enter ninth grade, usually the cohort starts in, in grade nine.
Okay, so that, that means when they're getting their points towards top 10 or their averages.
Well, they consider that's a cohort, so the ninth through 12th or one cohort and then the next kids would be, you know, the ninth through 12th graders. And the other piece was in regards to 100 level or more college level credits.
Are you all set, Nadine?
Um, hold on a second, sorry.
No, you're fine.
I sent them all to my phone, so I would have them.
It was the second of the additions, if that helps.
Oh, I think that's, I'm trying. My Wi-Fi is not that great here.
Yeah, I know that is.
Okay, yeah, let me just. During their cohort year, the year a student enters ninth grade, students who do not graduate during their cohort year. Little confusing, but I, I think I got it.
So, at, at this point, will it impact people in a negative way?
Well, I don't think it could be considered negative, but it will impact at least one student that we're, we're aware of.
And that's, that's because that person's graduating early.
By, by choice.
But I was just going to say, that's by choice.
Correct.
She could finish and then be part of the top 10.
Correct.
Okay.
So, are we okay with this to move forward?
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's been approved. We have a resolution for destruction of the May 21st, 2019 budget vote ballots, ballots. I need a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those have been approved. We have a revised notice of public hearing presentation, budget vote, transportation replacement, reserve fund, fund usage, and board member elections for June 9th, 2020. We need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, comments?
I have a question. So, the, the absentee ballots, when they're getting mailed in, they have to be postmarked June 9th?
They have to arrive by June 9th at 5 o'clock.
Okay, so if somebody mails it that day and you don't get it by 5 o'clock, that's not going to be a valid, because you're asking them to mail them in. So, if they're postmarked the 9th, I would think they'd have to be accepted?
It can walk them in, Nadine.
Okay.
The, the cutoff time is 5:00 PM on June 9th.
Okay. Okay, can we get that maybe put on the website? So, because some people questioned me about if they have to be postmarked or, or maybe we do, I don't know, but people are questioning me about that.
And asked the question of the attorneys and they said they had it, we had to receive them by June 9th at 5 o'clock, which is interesting because it could be a UPS issue. We do have a box that, in the, no, we actually don't. They can either, you either, Cherry's coming in early and Deb's staying late so that someone can be there in case someone wants to drop in. We have a sign at the front door at the elementary school to pick them up. But yes, we can put an update out on the website as well in regards to that.
I think it's important that they need to know, it can't be postmarked. It should be even maybe noted that postmarks aren't going to be, that it has to be physically at the school by 5 o'clock.
I believe it's on the website and it's also in the Chronicle that was sent out, but I'll make sure and double check.
Where's he speaking? Can you hear Cherry?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's been approved. We have, next, we have our voting inspector resolution. Obviously, with not having in-person voting, we need to have a little bit different inspectors to count the ballots, so we need a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Lisa, you, you have to say who the chairman is that will open and close. That's part of the resolution.
Okay.
And it would be a verbal opening. Whoever you choose can call and will open.
Okay, so the chairman will be, um, let's see.
You're still opening at 6 o'clock in the morning, Cherry?
Well, it's more of a formality because we're not opening to vote because it's all an absentee ballot vote, so it's just a formality of opening for the day.
Closing at 5 o'clock?
Yes, since, like we would in the past, usually Chuck would come in at 6 o'clock in the morning and open the polls and then Nadine would close at 9 o'clock. It's so you have a beginning and an end.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Um, what time did you say these were going to be? I'm sorry.
The closing is the PPD, so I want to close it at 5 o'clock on June 9th. You want to open that morning?
I can close. Nadine, did you want to do it?
It's fine.
Okay, so I can close at 5:00 PM.
And what time are you looking to open? I feel like I should do my last duty is doing one.
That would be good. I, I would say we stick with the time. I mean, it, it's always been 6 o'clock in the morning, but it's. The time, I mean, it, it's always been 6 o'clock in the morning, but it's, with this vote, it's a formality, so if you want to wait until 9, you can. Do it at 9. I don't think there's a problem with that.
Okay, you tell me what time and we'll organize it and.
You know what, Nadine, I just thought, it has to be 6 o'clock because that's what's in the newspaper notice, so it, it has to be 6 AM.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so still set up, we'll set a Zooming meeting to you so you can get it so you don't have to come in.
Okay.
Okay.
And then can I come in at 5:00 PM?
Uh, yes. We're going to be doing the ballot voting at 5, so yeah.
Okay, so um, Nadine, Hanlon, Board Trustee and Lisa Lovett. Trustee are hereby appointed as the permanent co-chair persons for the annual district meeting on Tuesday, June 9th. Um, and then do I need a list of the voting inspectors?
I would verbally say that, so your audience hears that.
Okay, so our voting inspectors will be Val Mahar, Terry Croft, Sarah Tynan. Denise Hare and Stacy Lionel. And Sarah Tynan and Terry Croft are hereby designated as chief election inspectors. And Denise Hare qualified um voter of, of the school district is appointed as the assistant clerk. So we need a motion to approve that.
I made the mo, I'll make the motion with those adjustments and the notices.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Questions, concerns, comments?
I have another question.
Sure.
So um, so if you have 5 o'clock deadline, um, are you going to be counting ballots as you move ahead?
Well, we can't open the ballot until 5 o'clock, so nothing will be counted ahead of time. It would be nice if we could, but it's. Not possible.
I just wondered how the process was going to go.
Are we?
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's been approved. Next, we have our music concert schedule. For 2021 in hopes that we will be able to have some sort of music program based on COVID. We need a motion to approve.
We'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have our retirement contribution reserve sub-fund resolution. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Questions, concerns, comments? Can you explain this a little bit, Julie?
Well, this is one of the reserves that the, uh, we recently received approval. We have one for employees retirement system. This is for teachers retirement system. So as I mentioned, we talk about any of those funds. We know our pension costs will go up in the year, so we can utilize these funds. Um, if we kind of assess what the pension increases might be, we can put that money in reserve, take it out. And not have to use general fund or budget to support um, that in the future. So this is specific for teachers. You've always been able to do an employee's retirement for a very long time.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's been approved. Lastly, we have our change order.
Orders.
Orders. Um. I saw the gym dividers. I was quick looking through. Julie, can you just quick say what else needs to be changed?
So gym divider, some of these things are just, you know, condition things that you find when you get in there are minor tweaks. Um, is using a royal center roll style instead of having two separate bathroom accessories. Um, again, just a small change there. Um, lights to the coiling door, those are in the tech room, lighting the little windows, if you will, um, some hardware changes. Um, the two tus, the dust collectors over at the high school are switching location, so there's some padding work that needs to go with that. That's, is just for visibility and maintenance. The other one is a credit, which is some ceiling mounts for some of the systems. We didn't have to hang with the HVAC piece. And then the last room is the gym divider for the ones for the elementary ones for the high school. It was supposed to be split, now it's just one in the, in the middle.
Okay. Um, we need a motion to approve.
So move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm still in favor, but I have a question. So it says reuse existing motion sensors. Are, are you mean existing motion sensors that were part of the initial capital project?
Yes.
Okay.
They can still work on this, this system, so that's, so if, in case someone's stepping in front of them, they don't fall down on your head.
So it, it's part of the new project, but it's not like what we have existing there now. It's, it's. They're not existing.
Do you recall, I can't remember if this, some of it's new and some of it is, comes with the rolling. We didn't have to replace all of it. We already had some mechanisms bought in the project, if you will.
Right, bought in the project, right. Okay. Okay, I, I'm just trying to go through them, reading, because I didn't catch up with all of them by the, by the time, okay. Okay.
Okay, Sherry, did you get that then? We're all set?
I got it. She stepped out for a second.
Okay, so at this point that um, we will move on to our calendar of upcoming events. Um. We will be doing our um, top 10 awards on Ju, on June 1st at 6:00 PM. We have our next board meeting on June 2nd, then again on June 15th. And we will have graduation of some sort, which I am very excited about, um, on June 26th at 7:00 PM. And then lastly, June 29th, we will have our Board of Education meeting followed by a work session. So, um. I just had one more comment come in that people are very much have enjoyed being able to pop in our meetings um, through Zoom due to childcare or whatever reason. And was wondering if this could be a new norm, even if we get back to inside the walls, if we could still do some sort of. Videoing with Zoom that the community members could come in to view and be in with our meeting. So something to discuss going forward in our next meeting, maybe. So at this point, if we don't have anything else, we need to, we can adjourn. I need a motion for, it's 7:51, to adjourn.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you, everybody, for your successful meeting and we hope you get out and enjoy the rest of the week in this beautiful weather.
Don't forget to vote. Don't forget to vote, everybody.
There you go. Thank you. Thanks for staying with us.
Good night, everybody.
Congratulations, Leila. Oh, she went up.